I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First thing is community forum, anybody here?
Nobody is coming to see me.
Okay. Conference interest waivers.
How do I forget that? Maybe it's just...
Okay.
I guess we're worried about everything else.
We're going to be using the agenda that's by itself, not the one that's stapled. Okay. So, could I get a motion to a job to adopt the revised agenda that's by itself? Motion by Jamie. Ashley. On the favor? Motion passed. Discussion item, celebrations.
The big one I have is that conference tournament champions for volleyball in both conferences this weekend. I know we came up a little short, but we're sitting in a great space right now as far as what the volleyball is concerned. Other than that, do you guys get anything else?
We have Thursday at the cheer competition. And we're heading off to our first host of the week on Wednesday.
Administrative reports, Amy? We're going to move the plan maintenance. He's addressing the fire right now.
We can do that towards the end, like maybe make that a nine eight.
Okay.
If you want to on the agenda.
Really?
It's still really bad.
And that's okay, because I can give you what he sent us an email to.
And I do have that.
Well, we'll give him a little bit of time. We'll give him a little bit of time.
We can do the talking.
Principal reports.
That's me.
That's you.
So Dave met with some of the grounds committee. We're going to go ahead and do some of the new, replace some of the old gates around the fencing, and then, you know, make sure our playgrounds are closed. And then they're just playing to Dave and the maintenance guys are just going to re-run, I believe, the wire along the fencing that we have. I believe that's what Dave will be doing. Our staff was super excited about that because we do have some runners sometimes, and so it just helps us to, they can't get away as fast hopefully. We've been visiting the apiary, it's north of Huron, it's a bee place. We've actually sent, we're sending elementary all the way through high school, depending on what teachers are taking them, so it's about an hour and a half visit that they go through and see how the bees work to survive hunting. And it actually connects with a lot of our science standards in South Dakota. Parent-teacher conferences, the date has been moved from the 12th to the 19th. It was just a scheduling snafu. It would work better for have all of our teachers there on the 19th though, because we were going to lose some on the 12th, probably some parents as well. So they'll be from 1:00 to 5:00 that afternoon, and then on Friday, we'll open that up from 9:00 to 11:00 too. So there's a couple days, a couple times they can come. End of the first quarter is October 19th. If you have time when we're done here, if you stop in the library, we have an artist in residency, it's an art grant we apply for each year. Marcus Tracy is his name. He is doing a mural in the library where there's that indent in the library where the, we used to have the lunchroom where the cooks used to be. He's doing a, it looks like a bunch of books on a bookshelf there. They're really big books though, so the students started working, can him start working on that today. So if you have time, you stop in there and see what it looks like. Behavior reports. Middle school, I had four write-ups, and then in high school, I had 10 write-ups and two out-of-school suspension. I've been, a lot of the training I've been doing this year have been in webinars. We're doing the title webinar that we've been working through, and then case is a special ed webinar through the state. Actually, it's nationwide, but I'm on the state one, so we meet about once a month and go through different things and laws that are changing in the special ed world. That's all I have for now, any questions?
Case, superintendent report.
All right. As we've already talked about, Dave will have a report on some of the other items tonight. As far as a couple of other things, we have a gentleman by the name of Mike Carpenter who's going to be doing the training for the bus wreckers that are finishing up some of the videos and everything else, so that's coming. Guaranteed ripping has been at the school. I know that the bid is around $170,000 to $175,000 to do the elementary drop, which is real close to what we were thinking it was going to be. I have talked with Derek Bootick from Mammoth, and he will have a 3D rendering of the football track facility as far as that, and still has those items out for us on our other areas that we deemed as means. You know, as far as drainage, you can name it. And then the concrete, as you can tell, has already started, it's looking great. And they are addressing some of the issues that we pointed out since last June when I first got here. So it's exciting to see that. Under that plan, that first part took two to three days. They're still going to be here a few more days, because there's just, the scope of work is running. We have a lot of that. Still dealing with a couple of internet issues, some has been things that we've got going on here, others have been just, you know, from the state. So that's just a monthly thing. We will, in just a second, do a little presentation for curriculum on Acelis, which is an online hybrid model that I have mentioned, and Lindsay has mentioned to Jim in a couple of meetings. And we have dual credits going. As far as myself and some of the places that I've been, I was in Mitchell, for superintendent's meeting, and Julie Fleet from the Department of Labor discussed career launch, and so basically I have that down. If you want some more information on it, careerreadysd.gov and South Dakota jobs. But a lot of work based on what I call schoolwork. So just seeing where we can go to help our students again be college and career ready, getting them going. Of course, I went to the Huron board meeting in support of the CTV grant, which we did write letters of support for. Gavel training, I did get that reset for November 8. And then Alice training, Dave and I will be going to that so that we can be trainers of our staff. As far as school vision, again, the process getting started is the toughest part. And, but we are having people stepping forward saying that they would like to be on that. I've got them up on my board in there. And, but some of the ideas that you guys can come up with would be great as well, because I just don't think that there's anything out of the realm of what we can take a look at when it comes to our schools, so just some of the things that I had down there. And you can, you can take a look at all of those. A lot of activities coming up, so I put those down as far as what's going on. Football, cheer competitions, cross-country, all-state chorus. We're going to have kids out all over our state in the next few weeks. And then as far as general administrative items, postings have been put up for middle school teaching band. I also put one up for kitchen, so you are aware. And then talking to Amy, we're roughly at about 304 students, which comes out to about 23 kids per class right now. Any questions as far as that is concerned, feel free to give me a call or whatever you want when you're there. But at this time, I would like to have just a quick presentation on Acelis.
Lori, Lori?
Yeah, it's about 10:00 here. So you just talked about enrollment numbers, you know, three or four, or whatever it is. So Mr. Rice, at the beginning of the school year, I was just asking where three or four of our students were, and he said they were online schooling through a couple of Western Springs, Northwestern, Huron. And I'd actually been working for the Virtual High School in South Dakota since its inception, about 20 years ago. And so my first reaction was that it's not probably going to go very well for those kids. A bigger concern is that it's kind of a trend. So we have a lot of students across the state that are fully at home, 100% online learning. And I guess my worry that I expressed to him in this society was that we had four this year, are we going to have eight next year, 10 the next year? And Huron's offering that, Springs and Northwestern, we should probably maybe get on board. However, everything the state offers is through what's called Edgenuity. And so we are going to do an online learning platform. We obviously want it to be different and to be better than anything that's going on around us so that we can keep the students we have and maybe attract more students from the area. And so I spent a few weeks trying to learn about what else is out there besides Edgenuity, because they really have control of the market right now. And I did find Acelis, which is produced by the International Academy of Science. And I just, they have some long videos on YouTube, but I clipped some together to make about a five-minute video here if you guys would want to watch that so we know you have some common knowledge about what we're, what kind of online learning looks like today. Is that board turned up?
Introducing Acelis Gold Edition. The all-new Acelis Learning Accelerator, redefining e-learning by incentivizing knowledge and modeling a positive social environment. Acelis Gold Edition caters the learning environment to the age of the students with an elementary, middle school, and high school student's experience. This allows Acelis to use different motivational strategies and rewards tailored specifically to each age level. Acelis Gold Edition awards students with gold as they progress through their courses, honing in on the idea that knowledge is power. More gold can be earned based on the difficulty of assignments and mastery shown. Gold that is earned can be tracked on the student's stat page with an interactive and visual depiction of the gold that they have earned by completing various educational tasks. Their gold is directly correlated to the academic knowledge that students are collecting every day, which starts as a beaker beginning and soon can turn into a hoard of knowledge. Students can also track their course progress and time spent with reminders to help them balance their time between each of their subject areas. Collected courses will prompt the student's attention until adequate progress has been made. High school students focused on meeting graduation goals can set their own personalized course completion dates to help them visualize the work they have completed, how much work is left, and whether or not they are on track to complete it in time. In Acelis, students learn at their own pace and are given daily goals that help them keep their learning on track. Acelis Gold Courses feature 3DI, a new method of instruction designed specifically for hard-to-grasp concepts. 3DI utilizes detailed 3D models to take students into the inner workings of essential concepts, zooming in to the molecular level when needed, or slowing down mechanical processes until they can be clearly conveyed and explained. Each concept is broken down and taught step-by-step. A student is then given an assessment, and based on their shown mastery, is moved forward in the course or provided with vector construction to fill in specific knowledge gaps. Acelis routinely monitors the success of each student by assessing factors such as each student's progress and concept mastery, fine-tuning the courses based on the results. Advanced students are provided with more rigor, while other students are given more assistance and provided greater focus on key concepts.
I used to think I could learn. It's like no matter how hard I tried, math didn't make sense.
We see it far too often. Students get stuck in a cycle and they can't break out of it.
My teacher got me started on Acelis Gold. And anytime I struggled, it would tell the teacher, and we worked together.
Acelis Gold gives educators a way to address learning gaps even in previous levels so that students can begin to experience success and get back on track.
From our perspective, teachers constitute the bedrock of learning within our schools. Our job at Acelis is to empower the teachers so they can reach the students.
I have a student who had completely given up on math, and he's starting to believe in himself again, and now he's succeeding.
I realize that even though I won't get that, I have the power to learn.
Seeing students remake their self-esteem inspires me as a teacher. It impacts the parents, it's transformed our school, and that's the power of the Acelis program.
So that's just a little bit of an overview of what the program looks like, which is nationwide. So this year, we can enroll students at half the cost, so we decided to enroll five of our students in it, ones that would normally be enrolling in an Edgenuity class because they need credit recovery credits. And they've been working on it for about a month. And we just decided to do a few student interviews so they could tell you a little bit about what they see. So this student, Mackenzie, she is a junior. She is taking biology because she's, wherever she was at before here, she has not passed biology yet. So she is in what is called a credit recovery course so she can earn the credit for graduation. Normally, she'd be in Edgenuity, and she's going to talk a little bit about her experience right now and how it compares to Edgenuity.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie, and I'm a junior, and I'm doing biology on Acelis.
So this is what your homepage looks like, you're right. Okay, do you want to just click and get into your class? Then this is what I am working on, okay? So hypothesis and theories. Can you just turn it up a little bit?
Yeah.
So it seems like it has really good graphics, do you feel like that helps you learn?
It helps a lot more than what I used to use, which is, I can't remember.
Edgenuity?
Edgenuity, yeah. It like, it explains more and it like has more graphics.
Yeah, it does. Is there anything else you like better about Acelis than that?
It explains a lot more information about it, and it gives like more details about what I'm doing.
So you're watching? So it's kind of hard to get kids to talk about their learning, so I won't make you watch all of this. But this is another junior taking biology, credit recovery style, and you can just... But just some... Hey. Who are you?
Dennis. And I'm in a lot of Korean, and I'm doing biology and Acelis.
Okay, and it's early in the morning, right? Okay. So that just, Dennis goes through and eventually wakes up a little more through the video, but it, I just wanted you to see that because... That every student, especially these days, is cut out for what we do on a day-to-day basis. Dennis taking biology in a regular classroom is probably not ever going to be successful. In fact, he hasn't so far. So online learning is a way that we can reach those students. There's a couple more in here kind of in the same mode. And then there's another student, Kayden, who's taking Acelis kind of the other end of the spectrum.
Hi, I'm Kayden, and I'm a senior, I'm taking physics.
So this is your homepage, and then can you just show me how you can enter your class?
I click on this, and then a video should pop up.
And then we have acceleration please. I've already written the problem out, so cars travel at 2 east and 25 meters per second. That's an instant time. If it's constant acceleration, it's point seven... Constant acceleration is point seven five meters per second squared to west. So it's always change, I've changed the direction of the acceleration. Finds velocity after eight and a half seconds have elapsed. So set up and write this out much like we did before, that it's initial...
You can go ahead and pause it. So when you do physics problems, do you usually take notes or...?
Yeah, I have a notebook full of notes that I take during the videos.
Okay, and then after the video, what happens?
There's some problems you have to answer, and then just moves on to another video.
Got it, so how do you like the Acelis course so far?
I like it, it's pretty nice.
Okay, have you taken Edgenuity classes before? No, so this is your first online, online course? So this year, you were the only one to sign up for physics, which is why you were doing it. But if you had a chance, would you take other courses on Acelis?
Probably.
Can you just talk a little about maybe about what you like or don't like about it?
I like how it gives you a set amount of things that you have to complete a day, and then when you do that, then you're done. Or if you work ahead, you can be done for a whole week.
Okay, right, so on your own, on your own time, do you ever work on it outside of school?
Yeah, I work on it, like when I'm bored at home and stuff like that.
Okay, which is nice, because then that would, during your busy weeks, then you don't have to do your lunch with your head. Got it, all right. Anything else you want to say? That's what it looks like for the students. You can, you know, as a teacher running the program, I get a lot of data, so how they do on their time is, Kayden's working an average of 32 minutes a day. He's 22% through the course. And yeah, so that's what the program's look like for both ends of the spectrum.
One thing, when we started talking about this, Mr. Rice and I and Lori, we talked about, if you really think about it, the last two years, we've lost about 40 students, which is a ton of students, it's a ton of money in the district that we essentially don't have anymore. And then really, when we start talking about, we talk about why are we losing kids? What is happening that the kids are leaving? So there's usually two places they go. They're either homeschooled or they're online. Usually that's kind of what happens. We do have our occasional, you know, floaters back and forth from Huron, or they kind of float around schools, we do have those, but essentially a lot of them are going to homeschool or they are going online. So one thing, just as we're talking about, as we were talking about this, we talked about our homeschool and how homeschool has become more, you know, it used to be a very rare occasion to have homeschool in your district, and now there's more and more homeschooling kids. So even this can be something that I've talked, that maybe our homeschool parents, is something that we could talk to them about, it'd be ran basically at home, but you can still be hitting, it is aligned with our South Dakota core standards. So they're still getting the standards they need, but you're at home doing it. So essentially, you would have the best of both worlds if you want to be a homeschool parent, because you'd still be giving your curriculum, but yet you can still, and our teacher would check it here, you know, to make sure everybody's staying on pace. I guess that's the main thing, is we were trying to figure out how can we get students back? What, I mean, to be honest, some of our class sizes are just smaller. Like we have a class of 17 that's coming into kindergarten, so we're losing them that way as well. But even if you get, can you go ahead and pull that one aside?
Well, I think the nice thing about this is that there's really no upfront cost, that everything you do is profit. So, like at this slide, you know, if you earn per student, Mr. Rice, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so when you take a look at that, when we do our average daily membership folks, it breaks down to roughly $7,128 kids per student. Okay. Per student, sorry, $7,128. Okay, per student. So right now with Acelis, it's about $1,600 for one year unlimited. You put in the cost of a laptop computer, and then you get there, and you are still to, ahead, almost $5,000, $48.55 is what you're looking at.
And I think this is really why districts like Huron and Western Springs and Northwestern have moved to this so quickly, even though it's not with the best platforms, because it is a money pool.
And they're doing theirs through Dial.
So they have bigger...
So Dial is actually more expensive than this, and Dial does not have the teacher component within the program. Because the one thing that we haven't even said here yet, but when we looked at this program, we on purpose answered some questions wrong, and it redirected us back to what the teacher was saying, said, now you've got to do this again and work your way through it. So they have the means to do that within the program when you're making your answers, or you're related, whatever it is. And if it's not right, they're going to take you back to that spot and then reteach it and go over it again, which I find very helpful.
And I would say, we're not, definitely not saying that this is for every student.
No.
For sure, I would say, if you want the, my opinion is, if you want the Cadillac of your student going to school, learning what they need, you should bring them to school and be taught by our teachers who have years of experience under them, and they do the best job of engaging your kids, and they spend hours, you know, getting them to understand concepts. To me, that's the Cadillac, so we provide that here. But some people, it's not for them, or they want to go a different route. So this is still us providing something for them. And if we don't provide, they go somewhere else and find it at this one, because online's online. And you can do online anywhere. I mean, if I want to, you know, live here in wealthy South Dakota and be part of the Rapids City online school, we can do that.
You can do it.
So it just doesn't, we're in nowadays, it doesn't matter where you live, it doesn't matter. A lot of that stuff doesn't matter.
That's $7,128.
Do I still think that we are the best for them to come into the, yes. I by far think it's best for students to come into the school. They learn so much more than just content knowledge, they learn how to cooperate, they learn how to be friends, they learn how to follow rules, all those things. We provide all those things that if you are online or at home, you can't necessarily, you don't get that every day. So back there on the screen, so this is some stuff I found on the state site. They have, so Westington Springs last year, the site said they had 74 online students,
and almost none of those are in the, living in the Westington Springs school this year.
Right, yeah.
They're all from...
All around.
All, all over the state.
Right, and so just from the money that those 74 would bring in, that's what they have, they have gotten from those kids. Now, I don't know how they spend all their money on those kids, I didn't want to call and ask. Northwestern, they have 34 last year, that's the money they receive from their students. So would some of that money go to those online students? Sure it would, but it would also stay in our district, and we'd be able to work with some of that money. And if you look there, year one, the goal would be to hopefully have 10 students, recover 10 students that we could pull in, so that's, you know...
And that's after the cost for Acelis and the computer. So we'd be looking at 10 students, $48,000.
Year two, we, you know, we would hope we could have 20. All of that right now, we haven't talked much about, because we have to talk about all this stuff first before we start putting the teachers into place, but we have talked a little bit about, you know, if we would need a whole teacher, or if we just need, you know, right now, we're lucky enough that Lori has a pretty big background in this. So with our Acelis kids right now, Lori, she has a free period that she works with our students. And they're in, you know, credit recovery. Sometimes when you come over from a different district, when you're in high school, your credits don't match up correctly, and so then we have to go a different route because maybe we don't offer that class their senior year, their junior year, so we have to give them some credits in a different way.
And really because of the online teachers and because of the support they give, if one period, I could easily manage 50 online students. So it wouldn't cost you money as far as teacher's salary for quite, you know, for quite a while. So can I just like make sure I understand? If we have 34 online students, that basically is going into our headcount, which gives us the extra money per that, that's how it comes in?
Yeah.
And oh, by the way, not that this should be a consideration, but it is a consideration, it does not hurt you on the activities side, since they're online students. This Chester, for example, has a large online student population. But those extra students, since they're not even on campus, they're not counted when it comes to classification for fine arts, for activities, athletics in general. Just so you're aware of that too. Just so you're aware of that too.
So could some students say in Huron or Miller, hear about this program? And they're like, hey, I think that might work for me. Can I open enroll in here?
Absolutely.
And then they're counted, but they're in Huron.
Yep, absolutely. Those are all considered open enrollments and when you're online. But oh, on the back there, you know, I, one of the biggest words to me this year that Jim stated to me and that I'm led by his vision. Okay, so can we support families who choose to homeschool their kids with some of these products? Absolutely, we can. You know, and then on the other side there, yep, the internship program with an option, you name it. These are all ways that we can reach students in different areas that they're at. You know, maybe we've got kids that are really big into CTE, others are into the science tech and math, but they have all of these as well through the Acelis programs. And now you can actually through, you know, what you have to take through the standards and then what you want to take, that would only add to your experience. We can do that through this. And again, the big thing that sets this apart from edgenuity, Dial, I'm used to Odyssey where it was another one. I mean, it was just, everything was on the screen, read it, do it, go. Now you can read it, do it, but you can also see it with an educator right there. And then on top of it, if you're still struggling, oh yeah, you could come and see. Because I'm one of those guys that says in-person's best, something like this. And then if you're still struggling, you can come in on a Friday or make some time during that period and actually come in if you're a homeschool kid or if you're a Huron kid, just not wanting to do everything, you can come in. So it's, it's just, it's looking forward is, is what it is. And that's what we wanted to present to you tonight.
And it's all grade levels, K through twelve?
Yep.
And so if we don't have a designated teacher and you only have one, you're, you're able to do, or whoever takes this is able to take on K through twelve and help and assist with any questions that they would have.
At this point, yes. I mean, if we have a hundred kids in it, obviously we have to do something about it.
We could probably afford to do something about it, but.
But I just want to make sure, like right now, we're looking all.
Like lately, at first, you know, your open enrollments will be high school.
Right.
And then I would assume they're elementary, middle school, they be homeschooled. So they, they would be the parent, you know, involved as well. So it's rare to get elementary, middle school open enrollments fully online unless they're.
But even for those, there's going to be a pacing guide too.
Whatever we want to put in place as a board, we could, you guys could do. So if you decide, if we would decide to do, to do something like this, you could put in, so we have elementary, but you know, a parent has to be home with elementary students in order to be part of our program, something like that. So we know there's somebody that would, like if it's a kindergarten student, obviously you're not going to want to have a kindergarten. I don't know if you would want that, but I'm just saying. Nobody wants that, I don't think.
I'm one of those guys that anything below grade six for sure, you know, I would, I would be one of those guys. You're either going to be homeschooled using this or I want you here.
So if you're homeschooled using this, the same standards still, there's still a number of our district.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, we would sign them up to the school as online.
Online is how we'd sign them up.
So it would be probably a whole meeting with that parent in elementary.
So parents can purchase this on their own, but it's like four times the cost. It's so expensive that I don't know how anyone could afford it, you know, unless they had. And it's just really expensive to buy at your home.
So if you have students tonight open enrollment due to class size, they start this, said, yeah, I don't like it. Now I want to come to school. Have you accepted them as an open enrollment if they're doing online? We haven't crossed that bridge yet. But if we accept them and all of a sudden they say that they don't want to do the online anymore and come in, I have been in a district that has done that and we said, you have to wait until semester.
Don't they label them as different schools? So you're in the same district, but it could, you would be in the online school as opposed, because we have three schools right now.
Right.
We have high school, middle school and elementary. That's how the state looks at us. We have three schools. We have one district. So if you had an online component, that would be your, you'd have four schools, you know, if you had high school. Right, you can have more of that, but it's different. It would be like a different school. So they would be applying, as far as I would be concerned, they'd be applying to get into a different school in your district.
Yeah, and those are things, like I said, in a district that I have been in, we had a person that wasn't like even online, wanted to come in and we had to wait on it and like that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You have a bunch of more classes. So like if a student wants to take French, so they, there'll be a fee just for that one student taking that. So will they have to come up with any of that cost or is that the district will just?
Yeah, I mean, I would have to say that's not even offered.
It was up there.
But it could be.
But physics isn't either.
But right now, we take care of courses.
Physics wasn't ever, it wasn't offered, but, but then we offered it and we only had one student go into their class.
I, I think a lot of your questions, like my E just, we don't know yet. Okay. Because this is just like step one, do we even want to look into doing this?
Right.
Where I think a lot of people would be.
Because it's a fee based on students.
No, per student. It doesn't matter if you take one class or you take eight classes.
Okay, and this isn't an open discussion, I guess.
Okay.
We'll, we'll. I, I'd like, like to delve into it and, and you know, maybe find out who might be interested in it.
Sure.
And earlier we could do it, it'll be next year anyway.
At that one.
Right, right. I, I've always, I've stated, I just wanted to see how online schooling looked compared to how it went over COVID. So I might, I might. But thank you. Yep, thank you. We'll get in touch following up with some more questions.
Thank you.
Okay. The history. Mid-central report. Nope, no, okay. Core.
That Seven Mindset Program, I've mentioned a couple of times. They said a school has been doing it and came back and said a lot of positive things about it. How in a short time, how well the students were doing overall. How the teachers were really liking it. So just I would share that information with the programs.
I don't know what was that?
Seven Mindsets that I've talked about a few times. Yeah, so they, that school has just had a lot of success with it. And also they are starting to look for replacement.
Pardon?
Our speech.
Our speech.
Media reports. Building and grounds, I know we have something to face in our jam. You want to talk about that?
Mr. Rice already kind of discussed.
Bill, too. What is that? Do we have that?
I have old Jim coming down.
Right.
I guess.
Nothing else beyond that, yeah?
Student council did not have anything, so.
Okay. Strategic planning, you have that to be able to reach out?
Yes.
And probably start making more decisions after we get ready.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Consent agenda. I get a motion for the consent agenda, please. Brooke, Brooke, second. Tara, second. On favor? All right, motion passed. All right, nine point one, do we have the first reading of policy? GCCAC, FMLA.
Well, maybe it's not. Maybe it's in the middle.
Or a question?
Right after the one.
You might try to retrieve it? Okay.
You have to record it. It's after this. Now you can.
All right. I liked it on my big screen reading, so.
That comment thing that you did, me, I forgot to print it. Why is that?
I will attempt.
You can just get rid of that.
Okay. All right, divorce U S and Conso District in compliance with the family medical leave of nineteen ninety-three, FMLA offers up to twelve work weeks of leave in a twelve-month period for, twelve work weeks of leave in a twelve-month period for the birth of a child and to care for the newborn child within one year of birth, displacement with the employee of a child for adoption or foster care and to care for the newly placed child within one year of placement, to care for the employee's spouse, child or parent who has a serious health condition, a serious health condition that makes the employee unable to perform the essential functions of his or her job, any qualifying exit. Exigent C arising out of the fact that the employee's spouse, son, daughter or parent is a covered military member on covered active duty or twenty-six work weeks of leave during a single twelve-month period to care for a covered service member with a serious injury or illness if the eligible employee is the service member's spouse, son, daughter, parent or next of kin military caregiving leave. Eligibility. Employees are eligible if they work for a covered employer for at least twelve months, have at least one thousand two hundred and fifty hours of service with the employer during the twelve months before their FMLA leave starts and work at a location where the employer has at least fifty employees within seventy-five miles. The twelve-month leave year is defined as a rolling twelve-month look-back period measured backwards from the date an employee uses FMLA leave. Each time an employee takes FMLA leave, the remaining leave is a balance of the twelve weeks not used during the immediately preceding twelve months. Pay during FMLA leave. Employees must use accumulated applicable leave time during FMLA leave. Time will be supplemented as follows. Sick if available meets qualifications, then PTO. Once accumulated benefit time is depleted, the remainder of the leave will be unpaid. Serious health condition. A serious health condition is an illness, injury, impairment or physical or mental condition that involves independent care defined as an overnight stay in a hospital, hospice or residential medical care facility, continuing treatment by a healthcare provider defined as a result in any capacity, inability to work, attend school or participate in other daily activities for more than three consecutive calendar days with either two or more in-person visits to the healthcare provider within thirty days of the date of incapacity or one-person visit to the healthcare provider with the regiment of continuing treatment such as prescription medication, physical therapy, et cetera. Medical and other certifications. Medical certifications is required when employees require, request leave for the employer's own serious health condition, the serious health condition of the employer's parent, spouse, son or daughter and military family leave. When the necessity for leave is foreseeable and the employee must provide thirty days' notice as soon as practical. Employees must provide medical certification within fifteen days after their request for leave unless it is not feasible. Under these circumstances, the human resource professional, the leave administrator or management official may contact the healthcare provider for purposes of authentication and or clarification of the medical certification. If a complete insufficient certification has been received but has a reason to doubt that it is valid, the district may require the employee to obtain a second opinion from the healthcare provider of the choice of the district's expense. For qualifying exigent C leave, the district is not permitted to require second and third opinions or recertifications. However, when the leave involves meeting with a third party, the district may contact the third party to confirm that the meeting is taking place and the nature of the meeting, but no additional information may be requested. The district may also contact the Department of Defense to verify the military members' covered active duty status. Fitness for duty certifications. The district requires all employees who take leave for their own serious health conditions to obtain and present certification from the employee's healthcare provider that the employee can resume work as a condition of restoring an employee. The district may delay restoration of the employee's until the employee submits a required fitness for duty certification. The district may contact the employee's healthcare provider to authenticate or clarify the fitness for duty certification. Employer may not delay the employee's return to work while contacting the healthcare provider. Employer may not require second or third opinions. Healthcare coverage. During FMLA leave, the district will maintain the employee's coverage under any group health plan on the same basis as coverage would have been provided if the employee had been continuously employed during the entire leave. During the FMLA leave period, an employee must continue to pay whatever shared group health plan premiums that the employee paid prior to FMLA leave. Payment will be due at the same time as it would be made if by payroll deduction. Payment is to be submitted to the finance office. If the employee is substituting accrued paid leave for the unpaid FMLA leave, the employee's shared premiums must be paid by the method normally used during any paid leave, generally as a payroll deduction. If the employee's premium payment is more than thirty days late, the district may drop the employee's health insurance coverage. The district will provide written notice to the employee that the payment has not been received and that his or her insurance coverage will end at a specified date, at least fifteen days after the date of the written notice, unless payment is received by that date. The notice will be mailed to the employee at least fifteen days before coverage is to be, is deceased, returned to work reinstated. The district will reinstate the employee upon return from leave to their original position or to an equivalent position with the equivalent pay, benefits, terms and conditions of employment. Equivalent benefits include the same level of group health insurance benefits as prior to the leave without any qualifying period or physical examination. When an employee fails to return to work, the district may recover from an employee its shared health plan premiums paid during an employee's unpaid FMLA leave if that employee fails to return to work after his or her FMLA leave entitlement has been exhausted or expires. Unless the reason the employee does not return is due to circumstances beyond the employee's control. I thought that was pretty straightforward when we talked about some of those reading stuff. Okay.
No, I just said it here twice.
Oh. All right. We'll just go to Mammoth for right now.
Yeah, okay. So again, like I had mentioned, I had talked to Derek Booty. Right now, I know that if we, if we're able to begin work on the track, the regular footprint that we have right now would be the most cost-effective way to go to put a track down. A new track would be around a one point four, one point five price point. That would include what they call a D curve. So you think at one of the ends of the end zones, basically from the end line of the end zone where the field goal poles are, all the way to the curve, that would also have a track quoting on it. So that would be good for high jump, you name it. So you can actually run something in there. Also discussed, you know, the stands, lighting. Lighting's going to run around four to five hundred thousand for, for good lights. And that's, that's one thing that would definitely need to be taken care of. I've been to a couple of night football games and we need to look at that. But we could also look at the rural education, so rural electric association. rural electric association for some help on that as well. All in, it's gonna be tough to say with, with the doing bleachers, if you want to do some elevated bleachers and the crow's nest, there is some sweat out there, but I would be telling you that you're gonna be in the somewhere in the two to four range right now is where you're gonna be looking at that. And that would be us doing our own throw area, which I'm very confident in getting that taken care of. Okay, so he's supposed to have stuff ready to go for us, that like said, the three D for the November meeting with the renderings, and just be excited to do that, because if we get that rendering, then we can generate some support for that hopefully, and then get all of that in as a part of our strategic plan and our vision. Okay?
Anything else on the gala training?
Okay, so we are gonna go under section B governance, and so just outline what the duties of the board are and what's the duty of the rest of the school and the administration. But anything else that we would want to discuss with Dr. Wade Pogony would be, be good if you have something of interest per se. But it's just, I, I have fun with gamble sessions to be very good, quite honestly, when you, when you pay wholehearted attention and just go, okay, this is what, this is what my role is, and go from there.
And that would be in this room?
Uh, yeah, we can do it right here.
Does that have a couple of hours, you know?
A couple of hours for sure. Yep.
Next, we have approving resignations. I don't have the resignations.
Uh, let's see. Do you have those, I believe? One from Connie was on a yellow piece of paper.
Two resignations, first one, Mr. Rice and Missy Hydrick. I am giving you my resignation effective today, October fifth, two thousand twenty-three. I have never been treated so terrible by one person, I believe you have a great school here, thank you, Connie Grayson. Second one is, good morning, I'm writing this email to inform you that I'm resigning for my role as a live ticket streaming events host for Live Ticket. I appreciate the opportunity you have given me, thank you, Brady Gelsi, Boise West School District. So can I get a motion to approve those two resignations? Tara?
A second?
All in favor?
I'm gonna oppose.
Motion carried. I have two contracts to approve.
Yep, one is for the live ticket position, Shayla Mylan Burke is going to step into that position. We are figuring out how to take care of the hour that pays, and she's an hourly employee right now. But we also do have a couple, we have one student for sure that's been also helping with the filming now, so that makes life a lot easier. We are setting up a time for Shayla too, just to get down to winter for training like we did with the last person. So she would be the one for live ticket. Uh, the next one is Ronnie Burquist, who has agreed to help coach volleyball and step right in. And from my understanding, that has been a very good fit so far.
Okay, I get a motion to approve those two individuals for the contract. Jamie?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion approved.
Can I ask, is the kitchen functioning?
I would like to discuss that in exact.
Those are the two resignations. Approve the yearly audit through E L A, C P As, and advisors.
They're the ones that always have nine times.
Okay.
Really, we're getting started next week.
Okay, okay, so.
I just forgot to get this out of last month.
I was told, Amy, and I said, well, if I get a good audit, then you have a good evaluation. Yeah.
Well, we're approving them doing it.
Okay, all right. Can I get a motion to approve the audit?
Motion.
Jamie? Tara, second, all in favor?
Oppose, motion carried. We need to appoint a board member to the delegate assembly, which would be November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three in the year.
We will get twenty-five all points for approving a delegate, and if they go to the assembly as well, it's another twenty-five all points for us, I'm trying to remember, who was our, Jamie, were you our representative last year? Was it, was it you, Tara?
And what does that entail?
Exactly, legislative positions when it comes to education. And I, I can send that to you, it has a full list, I might have sent it to you guys, I can't remember if I did those visitators. But it goes through all the stances that they, they would like the school district to take when it comes to education, the funding, all of those things.
As of now, I don't have anything on my schedule, so I will be that.
Okay, I'll make a motion for James.
All right, Dave and Tara went fast on that, approved.
And then I will put your name in tonight.
Okay. Well, since Dave's not here, you just want to, let's go over the concrete fencing old gym. In the grounds committee.
And then, yeah, you can, you can get that.
Dave has it pretty well.
He's, yeah, Dave did a great job of outlining all of this. Yeah, so however you wanna do it, Jim, you're in the grounds committee, so.
Well, I guess first thing, I guess, oh, Jim, let's, let's kind of talk about that, because I know we went up and looked at it, we have a few ideas, and I know he was gonna get some quotes.
He got some quotes.
Okay.
Yep.
What, what we were looking at, if you wanna talk about this, little Jimmy?
Go.
Okay, well, we, we went up when we looked at it, it's, it's pretty open right now. We're already paying to heat it, we're already paying to maintain it, so we might as well fix it up a little bit and get it. I know a wrestling program would like to wall up all the way to the ceiling so they could temperature control their, their area. And also make it noise canceling, to maybe just more, because I know I was in there a couple of times with Eden, and it's very solid material. So we were, the big thing was coming up with the heating and also probably some air conditioning to help with the moisture. Because for the remaining part, looking at making that the whole weightlifting workout room, putting a pad over the entire floor, and on the stage, maybe do ellipticals, those type of things. We thought that would probably work out best, we thought about ripping the stage out, but we looked at it and realized the ceiling of the former locker rooms is the top of the stage, so it wasn't able to happen. So those are a couple of the things, electrical is probably gonna be, I haven't looked at it yet.
That he's got in here.
He's, he's, he's got it.
Okay.
Move electric, our price to do the electrical work, eleven thousand nine hundred and seven. Electrical hookup for three ton A C unit, relocate F A heads, move wrestling room switches and rewire existing lights, move weight room switches, install four double, four double duplex outlets on north wall of stage area, install a hundred amp sub panel in the basement, electrical hookup for a five ton A C.
So I don't know if any of you have been in there, but the light switches are all the way to the back. You have to get a flashlight to hope you don't trip over something while you get back there, so definitely would help the wrestling program, they have their own.
And then we should probably put key card access to the.
Right. At the end of.
The front door, but into the, the weight room itself.
There's a gate, yes.
Yeah.
You know, and then out of that, we could possibly look at some open times for the key to use it, and it would be a lot of space to be, but that's probably in the future. Uh, I think if we were to do that, then the, we talked about the weight room down in this gym would be, everything would be moving up above, having the storage or the culture's office, so every coach could have a little space. Yep.
And then he had other, other bids in there for, uh, let's see. Five ton Coleman air handler from H and S Cooling. And two ton conditioning unit, condensing unit, and he has the price on there, and then we also have one from Gilbert Heating and Cooling, which, two air handlers, and then also there was another one on there for pretty large area for the front entry and bathrooms as well, or heater. Okay, air conditioner, so yeah, so that's in there. And then you also have, I'll just keep moving on, but the bid for the, from guaranteed roughing.
With that one, we would have to then put out for bits.
Yes, that one.
This was just a.
Yeah, because anything under fifty, we don't have, right?
I think it's under fifty.
Okay, yeah, but this one, we definitely have to let out for bits, but yeah.
I don't see, we don't have a quote for walling that.
No.
I thought Dave had said he was going to do it.
Dave felt like we could do that.
Okay.
He thought we could do it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, a little sweat equity in the electrical.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And then he also has some other items here, you know, as far as just the transportation report, he's really, you know, just really digging into everything we got.
Can I jump back, old Jim?
Oh, yeah.
He thought filling in the stairway, that would get rid of most of our moisture problems.
He mentioned, yeah, filling that in and maybe even ripping off that backside because we're not gonna use it, because that's where the leaks come from.
That's, once we get rid of that, then, then it would get rid of our moisture problems, because we went to some pump, it's totally bone dry. You know, there's no problems, anything that's coming in is from that back stairway, so I know, I don't, did he get a, I think he was gonna look at a price, or maybe he was talking about looking at himself too.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's looking and just seeing what's, what's gonna be most cost effective for us.
But that would get rid of most of the molding moisture problems that we have in the face, and other than maybe setting up some dehumidifiers down there and things like that. You know, there's still access to it, but we would live with that access.
Right, absolutely.
Sorry.
No, you're great, and then it's, you know, the transportation report that he had, well, for you.
Well, this one, we got it decided over.
Yeah, we do.
Because our skid steer, our lease is up on it, under state holder that we currently have. And so he has talked to, so we know what our, according to the lease, we know what our buyout is and what they would expect for payments if we wanna keep going on payments on our two thousand eighteen John Deere one. And then he has also talked to two different ones about doing a new lease on a new twenty twenty-four Bobcat. And what that would be, so I guess what we're looking for is, do you want us to stay with the current one we have and refinance, or either that or just pay for it? The buyout would be thirty thousand ninety-nine? Or if you're interested in leasing a new one?
I thought he said the lease rate was gonna be a little feeble towards us. It's for now, to the end of the year. I, I talked to Dave.
Yeah, and you, you would know more than I would when it comes to this one.
I mean, Dave kind of made it sound like leasing was gonna be the way to go, which means it's a pretty good deal on a.
A new one?
Right.
So that's what, I guess that's what we're kind of looking to see what, and then he's got on here what the payments will be. So if we would keep with the two thousand eighteen one to own it, what the payments are versus if we, if we, with John Deere, C and B, then give up that lease and do the lease, they would give us twenty thousand X O T on a current unit, payments for five years with another lease buyout, that's sixty-two fifty versus if we just do what the. So he's got some prices.
So the eighteen, we actually owned, or we leased it.
We, that means, and that, yes, and the five years was up in ours.
So we took it back, or we have now yet, and that was through T J?
Yeah, no, that was through C and B. We.
What do we do?
T J is where we have been getting the one for the wintertime, so like, then we'll have two things.
Oh, that's what you were talking about.
Yes, because then, I didn't realize the five years was up on the current one that we leased.
And the one that was through T J is what?
It's the one we do in the winter months. It, oh, it's another, it's another, I think we're, they're gonna do another Bobcat, or.
I'd love like two thousand.
Two thousand.
From all my children.
Okay.
So then that way we have two things for the, for the.
How many hours are on the one we currently have?
I don't know if you wrote that down, I didn't ask.
Did Dave have any recommendations, or did he just say, this is what it is?
Basically, and I want you guys to see what you want. I don't wanna speak for him. I'm thinking, you know, the nice thing about redoing a lease with a newer machine, then you've always had a newer machine.
Right.
Could we, but if we're leasing a machine that we're not hardly using, and it's got four hundred hours and we've paid fifty thousand dollars for, for four hundred hours on the machine, do we really need it?
Hi, I have no idea how many hours are on that one we have. What's the difference between what we get from, just explain that to somebody who doesn't run tractor. What's the difference between what we're getting from, what we already get from T J for two thousand dollars a year?
I think that's a small tractor, isn't it?
Well, I think it's gonna be a skid steer.
It's a skid steer.
I thought it was a skid steer.
In the past, it hasn't been.
Why can't we just get two from him for the winter months?
This year, this year's a skid steer.
Like, I don't understand why.
We use the skid steer in the summer and all, but could you get one for the winter too? We just have two skids here.
I mean, don't we just like.
Do we take it back at the end of winter, take it back to T J, or?
Yes.
Yes, do we take it back?
Probably through Premier, because they go out of that one there.
I don't, I don't see anything from Premier.
No, Premier and T J, um, right. T J is Premier, isn't it?
That's the one that always have not.
But I don't see.
The other one for the.
The other one for it, but for this, it's the one that he would have for the winter, so probably the skid.
We never had, ever had. Um, T J or.
No, I think we just like a long time ago.
He's, he is, we have both.
They're on.
I know skids gears have gone up.
T, um, the twenty twenty-four Bobcat would be T J. The John Deere would be there.
So there's two Bobcats on there.
Two ways of doing it.
And do his recommendations?
Yeah.
This one is, let's trade this one back in, give them twenty dollars.
Right, it has six, seven hundred dollars.
It's like a six, seven hundred dollars, you know it's making.
Okay, so the first one, the two thousand eighteen John Deere, that's through C and B and what we currently have. The twenty twenty-four would be a newer model, and what they're gonna do is give us twenty thousand X O T on the current unit we have with the payments for five years. And then give us the option to, to buy out the lease, so that's why it's cheaper, because then you're leasing it for five years with the option to buy it.
And when, do we have to know this today, Amy? Is it possible we can table it to the November meeting?
No.
Why?
Well, our lease is up.
I know, but okay, the question is, is, we already have T J's coming, so why can't we just. So why can't we just get by for the next three weeks and hope it doesn't smell? I mean.
Or that and have nothing here and hope that we don't.
TJ's machine isn't here yet?
No.
Because we haven't voted on that one or because we just don't have?
I just don't think it's here yet because.
I think it's November one.
Yeah.
I mean, because if that's something that we just have to do, I mean, even by, I don't think we go by proxy or whatever.
So this says that it can only have two hundred hours a year on it for the twenty twenty-four. So if we still did that with our twenty eighteen, that means that we have a thousand hours or less on the twenty eighteen that we have, otherwise we would have broke our lease. Is that a lot? I know nothing about ours.
No.
And then, so the, the next one, the twenty twenty-four Bobcat financed to own sixty thousand, that one is one without the backup cam. The twenty twenty-four John Deere financed to own seventy, that's a seventy-five thousand dollar vehicle. And so we're financing that to own it. And then the bottom one, the Bobcat, that's financing, owning seventy thousand and that one's got a budget.
Can you not use the Bobcat? I'm just wondering.
The Bobcat with the buyout, that's not. The reason the one is cheaper than the others is because in five years, we either could buy it for forty-two thousand or we could.
No, I was just wondering, Bobcat doesn't do that, huh?
I mean, why do we, are we able to just buy off without doing the nine percent interest?
Top one, we could just buy what we currently have for thirty thousand ninety-nine dollars. Or we could, or we could do the payments for the next five years, which would eventually be what you own it then after five years.
Well, I, I just don't want to, you know, get thrown at seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You, I guess I would, if we have one coming November one, I would prefer to use, just use our eighteen, even if we bought it and traded it in extra.
Which we could.
I would, I would be more in line with that.
And that's why I guess we're looking for you guys, because, I mean, do we just wanna buy what we currently have, so we own it?
Do you have enough on the budget? So if we don't, I mean, do you have a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar budget for, like, this kind of vehicle?
Well, if you, if we keep the two thousand eighteen, then it's only a little over there. And that we would have to pay.
Okay.
And that comes out of our fee for transportation.
I'm more of just buying what we have.
Especially since we've owned it since day one.
And, yeah.
We know where it's been, we know.
For sure.
And then we can always trade it in and maybe.
Then we can. So I guess that's our, what we were bringing it to you for is to see, do you wanna keep the newer model or do you just want buyout?
Well, I believe we're gonna have a newer model come November one for the winter.
For the winter.
For the winter.
Yes.
And that one should be used first. Might as well. Okay, I, I guess, is that something we could motion for?
I would make a motion to buy out at thirty thousand ninety-nine dollars of two thousand eighteen when we have to. Thank you. John Deere three thirty.
Yep, we can get a second for that. Mason made a second. All in favor?
I put a stipulation on it pending that there's no, no issues with it.
I don't think we've really got it.
Just ask Dave, hey, is there anything wrong with this thing or any reason that we should not keep this one?
Pending Dave's approval. All right, all in favor, the motion to buy the two thousand eighteen JD three thirty G, pending Dave's approval. Tara made the motion.
Mason seconded.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Is that? All right, we are going to executive session. Uh, can I get a motion to enter executive session? Six forty-five.
Is coming out with us right away? I'd appreciate it if you would give us a second.
Jamie?
Six forty-six.
Jamie, six forty-six.